Good evening and welcome to the February 25th, 2021 meeting of the Yorktown zoning board of appeals. My name is Gordon Fine. I chair the board. Joining me tonight on the board is Anthony Tripodi, Robert Fahey, John Meistrick, Bill Gregory, our recording secretary Glenda Daly, and our special counsel Adam Rodriguez. Before we begin, I'm going to do a few housekeeping items regarding this meeting. The meeting is being broadcast live on town cable TV channels. If you would like to join and participate in this Zoom meeting, click the registration link on the town's website calendar page for this meeting. All meeting participants will remain without video and on mute until their item is called in order to simplify the view on the screen. Those joining by computer can use the chat function in Zoom to contact the meeting host Robin if needed. You are a member of the public and if you are a member of the public and you would like to speak during the public comment portion of an application, please raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of the participants list or send a chat message to the host. You may request to speak or have the host read your comments or questions. Please do not speak until invited to do so by the chairman or host and identify yourself by stating your name for the record. If you are joining the Zoom by phone only, all phone calls will remain on mute in order to minimize background noise. Press star nine to raise your hand to the host indicating you would like to speak. When you're invited to speak, please identify yourself by stating your name for the record. If you're watching this meeting on television and would like to comment on an item, you may call to the Zoom meeting using the phone number and meeting information shown in the host box on the screen. Remember to tell the host you would like to comment, click the raised hand button on the bottom of the participants list, send a chat message to the host using the chat button on the bottom of the Zoom window, or if you're on the phone, press star nine. Next item of business is to approve the minutes of last month's meeting. Everybody received a copy of it. We've been receiving some comments from Billy earlier today. I've adjusted the minutes accordingly. Any other comments?
There was some grammatical errors, but nothing that you couldn't follow the gist of what was being said, so I really don't have any...
I think some of those were corrected.
Okay, alright.
At least the ones I, the ones me or Billy spotted were correct.
Thank you, Billy.
So I move that we approve the meeting, the minutes of last month's meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next order of business is to plan next month's meeting. Next month's meeting will be held on March 25th at 6:30. We will still be doing it on the Zoom meetings. If you have to send out mailings for your next month's, the next month's meeting, mailings must go out between March 1st and March 10th. If they go out before March 1st or after March 10th, we will not be able to open your hearing next month. It was also post your sign on your property, conspicuously posted on the properties that it could be seen, and bring to next month's meeting a copy or submit it previously, actually, a copy of the sign affidavit completed along with a photograph of the sign on the property in order to determine who to send your mailings to. If the contact the tax office in Town Hall, tell them you're sending out a zoning application to notify neighbors. They'll ask for your address. You tell them the address. I'll then show you the list of people you must mail your mailings to. You write those names on the list that, the blank list that you provided with in your zoning packet, and provide that back to the legal department prior to the meeting so we know that you sent it to the right people. Those mailings must go out by first-class mail. They do not have to go out by certified mail. You just have to send them out with a notice of mailing, which is a simple slip in the post office stating where it was mailed to and when it was mailed. It only costs about a dollar, it's supposed to be about $6 each. For next month's meeting, you must submit all, the whole packet back to the legal department prior to the meeting, so everything's put together in time for the meeting. If any of those items are not done, we cannot open your hearing next month. If we're going to do site visits, we're not doing site visits as a group. If the members going out to see the property, they'll do it on their own sometime before the next meeting. The building department also contact you to determine when they have to do their inspection. Excuse me. That being said, we'll move on to new business. First order of business is Syndaco, 2300 Old Compound Road, application for special use permit for daycare center in Yorktown United Methodist Church. Anyone here on that? Okay, we'll refer to the building department.
I believe there is, Gordon.
Who's here?
Here.
Who's, who's me?
Right here, Melanie Syndaco.
Oh, okay. There you are.
Aye.
Okay, this, this is a new application, correct?
This is actually a renewal, so there was...
Renewal, okay.
Yeah, a school was in there previously, and so I spoke to John Teager, and he had mentioned that the way to go, I'm sorry, John Landy, and he had mentioned that the way to go about doing this would be to renew the existing and then just amend the name.
Okay, so refer this to the, refer to the building department for inspection.
Gordon?
Yeah.
We refer to the fire inspector and also the planning department.
We'll do fire inspector and planning department.
And just one quick question, Ms. Syndaco. The application that was previously granted was granted on 218, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that that was right.
And the application was for 18 students, and now you're asking for an additional number?
So yes, the original application for the special use permit for that school was a little bit different because they had 30 students that were not part of the special use permit because they were part of the Department of Education. I think they fell under that instead. And then they asked for an additional 18 students for, you know, daycare purposes. So I believe that their total was somewhere around 48, and we're looking for 58.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, we'll also set this down for site visits by the members. If they're going to drive by, we won't, we won't be going in. We'll move to adjourned for that purpose. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is Librettory. Anyone here on that?
Yes.
Okay. Application addition with the front yard setback of 27 feet, 5 inches or a minimum of 40 is required at 468 Granite Springs Road. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, sir?
Good. This is, what type of addition is it?
I'm just going above an existing living room. There's no foundation work. I'm not changing the footprint of my residence at all. I guess it's one of those like pre-existing non-conforming houses that, you know, that's out there.
Okay. Alright, we'll refer to the building department, set it down for individual site visits and public hearing next month. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, board.
Very welcome. Moving to the adjourned agenda, we have Frederick. I see someone's here on Frederick.
Yes, Gordon, Dave Tetra.
Okay. Application in addition to rear yard setback of 28.67 feet or minimum of 30 is required, and for existing sheds with the rear yard setback at 14 feet, minimum of 30 is required at 2811 Hickory Street. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Mailings and sign affidavit are in order, so if you want to give your name for the record, then go from there.
Sure. David Tetra, architect representing the owner of the property. We are looking to put in addition off the northern side of the house. We had to adjourn last month because there was a shed constructed on the property that was not picked up on the site plan, so we amended the application to include the shed as part of this variance. So the addition and the shed are what we were looking for the variance for.
And you submitted plans for the building?
Yes, we did.
We have a memo from the building department dated February 19th. Property is inspected on February 16th. The building department has no objections. That's signed by Joe Venetucci. Board of any comments? What's, what's the nature of the addition?
Hold on one second here. Let me get my...
Elbowhead.
Screen. Here we go. Alright, we have, okay, so the property is on the corner of Hickory and Hemlock. We are putting an addition on the northern part of the house, and we are just basically taking the house and extending it north. We're keeping it in line with the rear of the house with a covered porch that's basically extending the existing porch across the front of the house. Currently, the house is non-conforming to the rear property line, so the addition is kind of just clipping that existing corner and actually moving out of the setback. The issue with last month's, with last month's meeting was the shed. There's, that's too far. There's an existing garage off of Hickory, and then next to the garage is a, is a shed. So that was what was added into the, the mix for the variance.
Let's see.
Do you have the actual plans for the addition also in there?
Yes, I'm pulling them up right now. I'm just trying to get to my, there we go. Okay. So, oh my God. I'm new to this.
There you go. Don't touch anything.
Yeah, no, right? Okay, so the, the existing, alright, so Hickory is along the bottom of the, of the, the screen. The existing house has an open deck along this area here, a covered open porch in the front. It's a one-story house. When you come in through the front door, you have your living room, you make your way through to the bathroom, kitchen, dining room. We are not changing the bedroom count. We have an existing bedroom, and the addition is taking one of the bedrooms and turning it into a master suite and adding on the addition, which is to the north side of the house, which is two bedrooms. So the front elevation is existing house, if you can see the line, and then the new porch extension across the front, and then new addition off the northern side.
Anybody in the board of any questions?
Can you show me the, the topographical, the, the real-life picture? Your hat was up here in the top corner? Not, not the plans, that picture, yes.
Yep. The, you want the aerial or the, I don't have the...
This is alright, this is fine. And show me now which direction we're going in?
Okay, so the addition is going to the north of the, of the house.
Right. Okay. Okay.
There's not much doing up there.
No, no, no. I just wanted to see the perspective with the neighborhood, yes.
No problem. The neighborhood's kind of to the right and further down.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Anybody in the audience, any comments on the application? Anyone there, Robin?
No, no one's raising their hand.
Okay. Alright, I would move then that we grant the application for an addition with a rear yard setback of 28.67 feet, a minimum of 30 feet is required, and for existing shed with a rear yard setback of 14 feet, a minimum of 30 is required at 2811 Hickory Street with the usual stipulation that this pertains to requested variance only, not the remainder of the property line, and that the addition be built substantially conforming to the plan submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great. Thanks.
You're welcome. Next on is Medina. Is anyone here on Medina?
It's already adjourned, right? There wasn't any, there wasn't anybody here last month either that's carried over.
Do we send a notice?
Well, what I'll do is I'll wait till the end of the calendar. If no one's here, then we'll just give them one last shot, and otherwise it's gone.
There, say, give them a notice. Say, hey, what's up?
Alright, how about Carvalho?
That was one that needed some additional information.
Right, I noticed there was nothing new was submitted on that.
Right.
It's Mike Grace's application, isn't it? Was he here?
That's correct.
So he's also on the next one too, obviously, so he's not here yet. So we'll come back to those at the end as well.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Chairman Fine, what, what was the resolve on the Frederick property? I landed, okay, thank you. I'm typing and... I also just sent a message to Mr. Grace, so.
Next up is McDonald's. Anyone here on that application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
There we go. Alright, this is application without 48 parking spaces for three disability act spots where a minimum of 62 spaces are required at 3481 Compound Road. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
The mailings and sign affidavits are in order. If you want to give us your appearance and go from there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. David Parnik with Brown Almond and DeLeo here on behalf of McDonald's Corporation with respect to the variance application for 3481 Compound Road in Portland. If you'd like, I'd like to hear a little bit of a background about the property. So this property is located at 3481 Compound Road, also known as US Room 202, just west of Pine Grove Court. It is presently zoned C4 general business and has been operating as a McDonald's restaurant for over three decades. The area surrounding the property is oriented commercial along US 202. There is a nature preserve on the opposite side of 202 to the north and then to the south. The property opposite Old Compound Road are residential properties. This property was previously, or previously obtained site plan approval from the town planning board in 2019. The operator of the McDonald's decided to kind of change his mind and add an addition onto the southern portion of the property. With that, we submitted an amended site plan application, and because of the addition, the rear of the site got pushed further to the south. The parking count requirement went up, and the amount of parking spots that we had actually went down. So we're, we are here tonight for that parking variance. As you noted before, there are 62 parking spaces required, and we are proposing 48 at the property, and that includes 388 spots, so we are looking for a 15 parking space variance. We are adding an 886 square foot addition to the rear of the existing building, which is going to be used as freezer storage space. And as I noted, the inclusion of that addition is going to essentially push the rest of the site further to the south.
Are you, are you adding additional drive-up windows?
No, we're not adding an additional drive-up window. As part of the original site plan application that was approved, we are adding a side-by-side drive-through, so there's going to be two drive-throughs next to each other, which then converge at a single point for the actual pay window and pickup window.
So that's not going to change the curb cut onto 202?
No.
Okay, we have a memo from the building department dated February 19th by Joe Venetucci. They have no objection. And I have a letter here from Westchester County Planning. Let's see what they have. They have no objection to the planning board assuming lead agency status. Note that the site is located next to Hunter Brook Waterway that connects to the Croton Reservoir. Currently, water runoff flows through an inlet pipe into the brook. While there is to be minimal disturbance of the site adjacent to the waterway, and the total impervious service of the site will decrease by 1733 square feet, we recommend that the town work with the applicant to install additional stormwater treatment measures such as a vegetative buffer, rain garden, or other natural water retention area at the southeast section of the site in order to better manage stormwater runoff before it enters the brook. Owners of the site development may be subject to compliance with New York City Department Environmental Protection. Rules and regulations for the protection from contamination, degradation, and pollution of the New York City water supply and its sources, including the preparation of a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Adequate erosion, sediment control, and stormwater runoff, water quality protection both during and after construction are of critical importance. We recommend the town require the applicant to verify that sufficient storage measures are provided to accommodate expanded county recycling program. We recommend the applicant consider the potential for including green or sustainable building methods and technologies in the proposed remodeling plan. Applicant should consider providing bicycle parking for employees and nearby residents. Have you seen this letter from the county?
I have not, but I would like to defer to our project engineer, Tiago Surce, with Dynamic Engineering. He is also available on the...
Okay, before we go to him, there's one more thing I want to read in from, just an email that was sent in from, also Westchester County Planning.
There is a memo from the planning board.
Well, I'm reading the, the rest of the county planning one first. Because the site is on a state road, the Yorktown Planning Board needed to refer the application to us, so they amended site plan approval. They referred it back on in December. The county planning board responded with the attached letter. Obviously, it's just a letter that caused the other letter to be generated. Yes. Bill, if you're at the planning board, why don't you run through it, because I don't have it?
Okay, a memo from the planning board dated February 25th, 2021. The planning board is currently reviewing the McDonald's site plan or amended site plan and stormwater pollution prevention plan approval. As a result of the proposed building addition, dual drive-through, the board approved on November 18th, 2019, which was not built, has shifted to the rear of the site and eliminated the existing parking spaces on the southern property line. The November 2019 site plan approval included 52 parking spaces. The planning board feels that since the nature of the building addition is for storage and is not adding additional seating to the restaurant, it will not create an increased demand for parking on the site that would justify the required 62 parking spaces, and that the site will operate sufficiently with four less parking spaces than was approved in 2019. The board also notes that drive-through service has increased considerably, and therefore the second drive-through lane is undoubtedly more important than those four additional parking spaces on the site.
There we go.
And there we had it.
Okay, now you said there was somebody else there wanting to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, we have the project engineer, Tiago Surce, with Dynamic Engineering, so I'd just like to hand it off to him to answer any technical questions up before the night pass.
Good evening, everyone.
Can we, can we take down their planning board notice? Thank you.
Now we got you instead, Bob.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, I don't know which is worse. I was on the other one as well, but I don't know which is worse.
Is it possible?
Hope there's no little children watching.
Is it possible to put up the site plan, the post-site plan?
Sure, I can, I can do that.
Just run through it briefly?
I saw it.
Everyone, see that? See that a little bit? So as, as David just mentioned, existing McDonald's restaurant located in the central part of the site. We have parking along the perimeter and additional parking bays in front of the store. The addition is in the rear of the building, so it's to the south. It is darker shaded gray. As you see, south of the addition is the, the two drive-through lanes that will be constructed. Again, that, that was approved by the planning board, and the main intent of the two lanes, basically that McDonald's implementing nationwide, is to increase the efficiency of the drive-through lane, get orders and customers through that drive-through quicker, because a lot of times the orders are prepared faster than the orders can be taken and cash collected and distributed out to, to the cars. So that's the, the real intent of the, the two lanes. Changes, additional changes as part of this site improvement are going to be the ADA, they're going to be redoing that to just ensure compliance with the current applicable codes and creating a recirculation lane at the north end of the site, basically just south of the, the Compound Road right away. Basically, purpose of that is to allow a car to recirculate it for whatever reason. The order got messed up, or they have to just go back to the store for, for any reason. It allows you to, to do so without exiting the, the subject site.
Any plans to reduce the amount of seating inside?
No plans. The final decor layout isn't finalized yet, but what we find is that in general, the number of seats does reduce as part of these remodels, because back when this was constructed, the, the codes were a little different, so now spatially you need more room between suite seats and tables for, for 88 clearances. So currently, there's, I believe, 78 seats inside. What we find is usually you're down to, to 60 in the remodeled sites.
Will there be outdoor dining?
No, not a part of this application.
And the addition basically is for storage?
Yes, it's a, it's a freezer addition. It's actually replacing the existing freezer, a cooler addition and just dry storage.
And where are we now in the planning board process?
We received approval, and actually, I'll pull this up. This might be a little clearer. So the red lines on this, on this plan, I believe it was submitted with the application, demonstrates what was approved by the planning board originally. So the red lines showed the drive-through lane closer to that existing building. And then with the addition, we had to bump everything out further south of the site, losing the, the parking bank at the very rear of the site.
Mm-hmm. Do the dumpster locations change?
Nope, dumpster stays the same. As part of the, the planning board process, we, we are adding, they did request that we add a, an access to the rear of the property in the event emergency access vehicles need to get in from the, the rear road.
Will customers be able to egress from the property to Old Compound?
It's, it's gated and it's, it's locked, so it's a fire department-approved device.
Okay.
So if they didn't build the addition, would we be here for a variance for parking?
We would not, no.
And it's just the extra square footage is triggering more spaces?
It creates the need for more parking under the code.
Right. So the counters and everything are going to be in the same place? It's just more utility, utilities type space behind the counters?
Correct. It's, it's not public area that's, that's being added.
Right, well, what I was, I guess getting at is you're not adding public area, but are you moving the currently non-public area that kind of adds, you know, more seating where the counters or whatever already are?
No, everything customer service area related, so the dining area, the bathrooms, that, that's all remaining unchanged.
Okay.
It's all back-to-house improvements.
Did you say previously that the seat count's going to go from 72 to 60?
No, no, under existing conditions, so it's out there today. I think it's, it's about 70, 70, 77 spaces, 77 seats. And then what we find on the remodels is that the, the seat number decreases due to just the, the spatial requirements of the new building codes.
Is there a projected increase in customer, I mean, obviously, we're streamlining customer service by what you're doing, but do they project that they'll increase the number of, of customers coming in? I mean, that's hard to gauge, but is that their anticipation?
No, and I, I've done a number of these, and the intent is always to, to better serve that existing customer base. It's not, it's not a new draw.
Okay.
So in some of the memos that were being read, I heard the number 52 spaces and losing four, but the agenda says 62. So is it 52 would be needed and we're at 48, or it's 62 would be needed and we're at 48?
John? I was referring to the planning board's 2019 approval, which the planning board has the ability to reduce parking without a variance.
Okay.
This is too great of a percentage reduction for the planning board to do alone.
Okay. So currently, is there, does anyone have any idea how many spaces are there at McDonald's?
Currents?
Current spaces?
Yeah, like, are we losing like a lot of spaces from the current existing?
No, so the, under existing conditions, there's 52 spaces. No, so the, under existing conditions, there's fifty-two spaces.
Okay.
And the proposed with the addition and the drive-through, uh, improvements, it'll go down to forty-eight spaces.
You're losing four spots.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then just to, to add on to, to that, um, we do, we did do a, a parking, uh, just analysis for the site and typically what you had about, when I say typically, I mean, what, what's a industry standard for, um, fast food restaurants, uh, as stipulated by the Institute of Transportation Engineers is usually one space per, per two, two seats. Um, so in this case, the, the requirement is much more, it's much more, uh, a- aggressive, uh, the town's requirement for what is typically used for, for restaurants.
Has there been an increase in war in, in the foot traffic? Obviously it's fallen off and the need for parking. Most people are going through the drive-through service, I'm assuming at this stage with the COVID and whatnot going on. Is, is, is that where, is that, has that been factored in?
Correct, and the, the, the addition of the side-by-side drive-through lanes ju- further just assists in, in helping that. Uh, because what you'll find is if with that single order point, traffic will, will back up, uh, and stack onsite and
as the amount of, as the amount of people inside diminish, the people that sit at the table?
Yes, I don't know specifically for this store, but, uh, in general, um, they've shut down a lot of the indoor dining.
Okay.
So they're just fully drive-through at this point.
Okay.
Well, when the, when hopefully the world comes back to normal the way it was, you really only talk about losing four spots.
Right.
Right.
Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? Anybody on the board have any other comments? Have you taken into consideration the, uh, memo from the county planning department that I read in?
I did not receive a copy of that, but it, it does sound some similar to what they issued for the, the initial application, which was through the planning board. Uh, because we, so for Stormar, for example, we did add, uh, an inlet filter. So there's one existing inlet onsite, uh, in coordination with the engineer, we, we agreed to add a, a filter, um, basically to just increase, in, improve the water quality that was being generated by the site before it does discharge into the Hunter Brook. But we can, we can review the rest of those as well. Um, but I largely believe a lot of those had been addressed as part of the, the original application.
Sorry. Any other comments?
All right, I would move then that we grant the application, allow forty-eight parking spaces, including three ADA spots or minimum sixty-two is required. Uh, thirty-four eighty-one Crump Pond Road. Usual stipulation that this be, the addition be built in substantial conformity to the plans as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Ball favor?
Hi.
Hey.
Thank you, Mr. Colonel.
You're welcome. And next on is Goretto.
Uh, yeah. It's, uh, Dave Tetro again.
Oh, okay. Application addition with a side yard setback of eleven point one-three feet or minimum fifteen is required and a combined side yard setback of twenty-six point seven-three feet, minimum forty is required. Thirty-three fifty Poplar Street. Good evening again.
How are you?
Good.
Okay, so on Poplar Street, there is an existing two-story dwelling with a an addition of a, a two-story, a two-story addition to the right side of the property. Um, sorry, the right side of the house. And we're looking for an eleven point thirteen, uh, side yard setback. And, no, I'm sorry, combined, combined and fifteen-six and combined, sorry. Of, where is the next page here? Okay, so the addition is going to be to the right side of the house and it's going to be two-car garage in the lower level and a loft space above, which is just, um, an open, whether it be a weight room or something like that, unheated, unfinished, and it's going to be accessed from the existing garage. So it's not going to be habitable space or any, or anything like that. Um, it is going to, here we go. Yeah, so it's just going to increase the width of the house. Um, we're not, we're not hitting any other, other points such as, um, uh, building area, et cetera. Um, pretty straightforward in terms of the look of the house. Uh, we are in a, uh, we are in, in a flood plain, so the construction is going to take that into consideration when the, you know, when we get to the construction drawings.
And the new roof line's going to be no higher than the existing roof line, correct?
Correct, um, the, if you, if you see here, the existing roof line, and I'm not showing all of it. We're not, we're not hitting the ridge on this. So the existing roof line is going to end up being a little higher than what's showing here. So this proposed roof line is going to be under that. So we're not, not increasing height.
What is the ceiling height in, inside of the loft area?
Uh, it is going to be your, it's going to be eight feet. It'll be, we're, we're lining up with the existing. Or maybe it'll be seven, I have to look at my, at my file.
Is that going to be a heated space?
No, it's going to be unheated, unfinished. It's just going to be, uh, unfinished, uninsulated, unheated. It's actually connected to the existing garage, Bob.
Is, is there a way of, it, I'm, things like this, and I take with all due respect.
Sure.
This could become living space. If, if, I know if it was, if I was moving into a house like this and I had that area, I'd be looking to utilize that as a living space. Is there any way to, to, to prevent that? Like we'd lower that, that, that roof line down to a, a six-foot height? Or make sure that you could use it for storage, but you couldn't live in it? I don't know how that impacts the plans, but that's.
Well, no, we, we would end up, we would end up with headroom issues with the stairs coming into, into the addition. Um, so here, let me walk you through what the existing conditions are right now.
Okay.
Currently, this is the existing garage. And the, the cars pull in from the side into the garage. So what we're doing is the addition that's coming on, we're going to be addressed, we're going to be entering into the garage from the front. So the stair that's getting us into the loft space above is within the existing garage, which is remaining unfinished. Uh, and it's going to be actually open to the proposed garage. It's all going to be one big unheated space. So the loft above is just a continuation of that space and there's really no way that we could make it a finished space without jumping through hoops with fire code and second means of egress and all that sort of stuff.
If you want to do it legally, in a nice way, but, but yeah, no, I see what you mean, I see what you mean, okay.
Yeah, no, I, it just, I wanted to make sure that we're clear with that, that's all.
It, it's an open loft, not a, not a full finished floor, correct?
Correct. Well, well, no, 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 what do you mean by open loft?
When you, when you say loft, usually you're referring to something that, that basically has three walls, not four. So it's open into another area.
Uh, no, well, no, okay. Well, I'm calling it a loft because I, I'm not really too sure about what to call a space above a garage, aside from storage.
Attic?
So it's, I, I think it's a technicality in terms of the word that I'm using. It's just a continuation of the unfinished space of the existing garage above. So it could be.
It's basically, it's basically attic, it's attic space above the garage.
Correct.
With an eight-foot ceiling.
Now let me.
So, you know, why do they want to build, uh, this space above the garage? Is it for storage or, you know, or why wouldn't they have wanted living space? They didn't think a variance would get approved?
Um, because they, they don't, they're not looking for the living space. They're looking for a place to put maybe like a workout bench, um, some storage up there. Uh, they want to kind of keep the, the area open for additional things like a motorcycle down below, that sort of stuff. So they kind of want to move the stuff that's in the lower garage up there so they could utilize the ground floor garage space for garage stuff, lawn equipment, et cetera.
Isn't, this is an existing garage or this is a whole new garage?
No, this is going to be a whole new two-car garage. That's going to be maintained its access to the existing garage without cutting it off in terms of doors. And well, there's going to be some wall space, but we're not putting doors in, we're not finishing the existing garage. It's all just going to be unfinished, unheated space.
We have a memo from the building department dated February nineteenth. They have no objection, but, uh, Joe Benatucci points out if the existing shed, the area of the addition is relocated and not removed, it'll also need a building permit of a hundred square feet or larger. So apparently it's a shed where you're putting the addition now, what are the plans for that?
Uh, well, it would have to be, uh, relocated or taken down. I mean, it can't be, it let, it can't be left in that spot because the addition's just going to consume it.
Right, so what he's basically saying is if, if it's, you know, larger than a hundred, a hundred square feet or more, it's going to need a building permit if you're putting, playing or putting it somewhere else.
Um, sure, if, if, okay, so let me ask you this question. If they decide to relocate it on the, on the property, um, would we need to amend this application with the board?
Not necessarily, not if it doesn't need a variance. But what he's saying is if it's a hundred square feet or larger, it's going to need a building permit of its own.
Sure, okay. So I, you know what, I haven't, I haven't really coordinated that with the owner in terms of what we're going to do with the existing shed. So if it decides to come down, I'll amend the site plan when we go for the construction drawing.
It's more, it's more of, you know, a, a proviso from building department than it is, you know, saying something's wrong.
You know, no, no, that's totally fine, but we'll, we'll, we'll address that when we go for the, for the actual building permit. I just want to make sure that if we're unsure on what we want to do going forward right now, it's not going to affect our zoning variance application.
No.
Okay.
So right now there's like a one-car garage that runs not, you know, it kind of runs like, runs parallel to the long end of the house where you pull your cars in.
Yes.
So you're going to kind of subsume that and there's only going to be two, two garage doors ultimately on this?
Yeah, currently, uh, currently there's two garage doors coming into the side of this existing garage. So those two garage doors are now going to move to the front of this addition. So it, it's, yeah, we're, you can look at it as saying it's a four-car garage, but it won't be that because we don't, we can't utilize both garages for cars. So, um, we're not taking over the existing garage with this addition, we're just adding on to it. Is that answering your question, John?
Yeah, I was just having trouble, uh, because I could see the garage doors are not on the front of the house or kind of like on the side and then there's two left, so.
Let me see.
In this picture that I'm looking at, the, um, which one is the new, the new is the, not as dark?
The dark, the new is the, is the dark.
He's the dark, okay. And all those stairs and so forth you're adding?
This is, yes, this is the flight of stairs that's getting us in, into the, to the upper portion here.
Is, is this, I, I, I think you might have answered already, but forgive me, I'm getting old.
No problem.
Are we heating this garage?
No, it's unheated. It's unheated, uninsulated.
So right now, everything on the left is the two-car garage, no stairs, there's no, I see, looks like walls.
Okay, so what you have, here, hold on, let me, uh, where is it? What would be the best? Okay. So can you guys see the picture? Do you see a photograph on your screen?
Uh, no.
No, you have to.
You switch to that.
Just choose new share.
New share.
Who was that?
Okay. Okay, so this is, this is a view of the house, standing in the driveway, looking at the house. Uh, these are the existing two garage doors that are going to now move to the front of the addition, which is coming off of this one-story garage. The second floor of the house kind of sits, it kind of straddles over the existing garage a little. So when we come back to.
Yeah, there's a support structure in there.
Correct, so what this, what you're seeing here with this post and these double lines is the addition, is the second floor above sitting on top of this garage.
Okay.
So this isn't like another room. There's mechanical equipment over here and that sort of stuff, so it's a little, a little tight. But, uh, I think between, I think that, uh, hopefully that photograph kind of explained how this thing is working a little bit more.
Yeah.
Are there any plans to use the existing garage? And how will it be used?
Uh, it's going to be used for just more, you know, just storage. You know, be whether it's a motorcycle or kayaks or that sort of thing or whatever. It's just, it's going to be just more storage space.
Do we have anybody in the audience wants to comment on the application?
No.
No, anybody else on the board have any other comments?
Um, I, I think it looks nice in, in the picture and the renderings. I'm, I guess a little bit wondering, you know, that you get basically existing two-car garage is going to turn to storage and above the garage is going to turn to storage and, you know, it's, it's like a lot of garage and storage being added. And, uh, you know, I don't know, I mean, I guess it's just, uh, not, not typical. And I don't know if there's another way to accomplish all that and, um, or if we should look at maybe thinking about cutting it or something like that, but.
If you cut, if you cut the size of the addition on the top, it's going to, it'd look strange if it's because it's no longer offset with the second story of the house.
Yeah.
I see that, but I'm a little uncomfortable with an eight-foot storage space. It just lends itself to being refinished at some point.
Listen, you know, we can't, we can't sit and prevent people from violating the law.
That's, that's obviously true, but you can take that into consideration.
Things, you know, in order to make it living space, they need other permits. If people want to violate the law and get, you know, do things, you can't stop them from doing that, but to have us try, you know.
Right, but, but I would also say for that, like, if someone, if this application was in front of us and they wanted that to be living space, I'm not sure we would have a different deliberation. Um, you know, living space versus storage space. I'd be worried they're trying to put an apartment in or something.
John, I agree with you. All right, I've just, I, I'll just flesh it it out, I've just.
No, but I, I, yeah, if it was like an obvious like apartment that could be made, you know, that's a little, maybe a little different than personal living space versus personal storage.
Uh, John, that, one of the things is when, you know, when I sit down and talk with the clients and we go through the project and everything, you know, i- i- if we're going to be doing something that might be a little controversial or may, you know, come across as not being the intent of what we're doing, I, I wouldn't push for a variance, you know, I, I'm not, and I understand where you're coming from. Uh, it makes total sense, uh, if I was sitting on the board, I'd probably be saying the same things, but, um, you know, in order to make this habitable space, we would have to jump through a ton of hoops in terms of fire ratings and egress and all that kind of stuff, uh, getting it finished and everything, so.
Right.
You know, uh, I kind of built a couple of those things into this design to kind of prevent that from happening.
Okay. And, uh, with respect to that side, um, there's a neighbor, I guess, on this, on the side where you're impinging into the setback. Um, any idea how far the neighboring structure is to the property line?
Um, let's see. Okay, so currently we are approximately, we'll say thirty-four feet from the corner of the house to the property line. I would say what, you would look at this and say twenty-four feet give take, twenty-five feet somewhere from here to here?
Right.
If this is thirty-four, this is almost the same, but let's just give a little bit more, let's say twenty-five feet. So you're still looking at being over thirty feet away from the house to the addition. So the addition will be coming out here.
So this is eleven where fifteen is required basically, right?
Correct. Let me see what we have here. Denial, 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 denial. Yeah, eleven point one-three. Yeah, eleven point one three where fifteen is required.
Okay, I don't think I have any more questions.
Somebody in the audience with a question? Okay, that would move that we grant the application with an addition with the site, for an addition with the side yard setback of eleven point one three feet, minimum fifteen feet is required. And a combined side yard setback of twenty-six point seven three feet, minimum forty is required. With usual stipulation this pertains to requested variance only, not the remainder of the property line, that the addition be built substantially conformly to the plans submitted, but a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up is Maresi. Someone here on Maresi?
Yeah, Peter Scott's here.
There?
I'm here.
Okay, application for special use permit for a home office at five thirty-five Jerome Road. Give your appearance to the record, please.
Uh, my name is Peter Scott, I'm representing, uh, Tom Maresi at five thirty-five Jerome Road, a licensed architect and a licensed engineer.
Hey, you wanna run us through your application?
Pardon me?
Run us through your application.
Sure, so, uh, the, uh, package before you, uh, is for a special use permit for a home office. Under section three hundred and seventy-six, uh, and basically, uh, we're conforming with the regulation. Uh, we have less than three people in the home office. Uh, the, uh, square footage of the office relative to that of the main house, uh, is eighteen point six percent. Uh, we've provided parking in a courtyard for the particular project, uh, and we're fully compliant. Uh, the planning, uh, board, uh. Sent a letter to you recommending, uh, that we have, uh, eighteen trips or less, uh, per day for the facility. Uh, which is pertains to the home office, uh, with the, um, business assistant. Uh, and a periodic bookkeeper, that's four trips per day, uh, that would give us fourteen trips per day for guests. Uh, and that's acceptable to us to keep it under the, um, the, uh, criteria of eighteen trips per day per section three hundred and seventy-six. Uh, the property, I could kick to, I could share with you if you'd like to see the project.
Definitely.
What is, what type of office is?
Tesla showhouse.
Well, that's what it says, I'm trying to figure out what that means.
I am too.
My, my client, uh, is, uh, financially involved with Tesla Corporation. Uh, he's not an employee, but, uh, he represents a, uh, a group of Tesla as a outside consultant. And basically, this is a prototypical building for the Tesla product line. Uh, and basically, uh, we are incorporating every component you can think of, uh, from the Tesla Corporation to the house. Uh, we're a major power supplier, uh, we have, using a proprietary Tesla heating system. Uh, we're using, uh, proprietary Tesla window systems, uh, and it's the first of a prototype. That we're gonna provide, uh, throughout the metropolitan area, one in Connecticut, New Jersey, Rhode Island, uh, and, um. And this is the first one, uh, my client, uh, will live in the home, uh, but again, uh, periodically. Uh, there'll be some guests, uh, invitation only, uh, which will visit the site to look at the, uh, what the future of what Tesla can provide. Uh, so we basically have.
It's a model home, basically.
Yes, it is.
How much traffic do you anticipate?
Uh, currently, we're only looking at about five, uh, uh, groups of people per month. Uh, and again, um, the, your, your particular section, the three hundred and seventy-six allows up to, uh, eighteen trips a day, we're way under that number. Uh, but again, um, this is just, this will be one of, uh, many, um, model homes for Tesla. Uh, and so, um, and we're the first one, but as we put more of these up, identical designs. Uh, we will basically spread out the demand, uh, through various, uh, locations, uh, in the, uh, eastern seaboard. Uh, there is only one of these, it's in California right now, this, this will be the first one in east coast.
Can you submit a parking plan to the planning board?
Yes, I did. It's on my site plan, I can go over the site plan with you.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, be good.
Let's just go share some interesting stuff if I can. This is what the house looks like, uh, and basically, uh, what you have before you, uh, is what the house is. Uh, I will highlight, this is where the, um, office spaces are, are above a garage, a portal area. In the garage, uh, we have numerous, uh, various Tesla vehicles, uh, that my, um, client utilizes. Uh, there'll be a charging stations, uh, there's a battery pack system for the major energy supplier. Uh, and then basically, uh, we have a, uh, separate entrance for an upstairs office space. Uh, the garages are here, the main dwelling house is like a big L, it extends off to the south, uh, with a wing. Uh, and, and, uh, many other, um, components such as a pool and, um, outside decks, et cetera. Uh, so, uh, with our facility, uh, the clients would drive up, uh, uh, and there's parking in a big courtyard which measures. A forty-eight feet by thirty-two feet, and it can accommodate, uh, three parking spaces, a plus additional parking for the four vehicles. Uh, and again, these are guests that come to the site.
Can you tell, how does? How does a showhouse or a model home qualify technically as a home office?
Well, basically, most of the in, uh, intent of the project is to be utilized, uh, with, uh, my, my client actually works. Uh, in the, uh, house itself, uh, he'll be on the second floor of this facility, and I can get you to a, um. To a second floor potentially, floor plans, and let me see if I can get that for you.
He'll be, he'll be living in the house, though, is that?
Yes, he's been at it full time, yes.
Yes, okay.
Now, this house isn't built yet, correct?
No, this is a, a, a fully, uh, brand new house, uh, my, um. My client purchased two lots of the Stammer subdivision on Jerome Road. Uh, it was just recently approved in, uh, two thousand and nineteen, uh, and two of the lots were purchased, one is four point two six three acres. On which this house will sit, and there's a vacant lot, uh, to the west, uh, which, which right now is three acres in size. Uh, and that, so we have a total of seven acres to work with, and in the middle of that, we have a sixty-four hundred square foot house. Which is depicted for you on this, um, floor plan, and this shows you how it's, uh, set up, so you have, you have a standard, a house design, there's the garages. Uh, there's the, uh, entrance way going up to the office space, uh, and also there's an internal staircase. Uh, if clients would like to come down and look at the facility, again, he's living there full time. Uh, and, uh, we have a lo- full lower level which is, uh, finished, uh, to the center core of the house. Uh, and that's like twenty, twenty-two hundred square feet, and our office is right here, it's a, it's twelve hundred square feet. Again, separate entrance way, a separate little, um, porch area, uh, and within this area, uh, my client, uh, is, um. Uh, working on, um, uh, financial components for Tesla itself, uh, of which this system. Uh, will be part of the, uh, the business plan for this, uh, project.
What are the planned days and hours of operation as an office?
A, a, a letter with my application, the owner will use the office between eight to five thirty, a business assistant comes in between eight thirty and five o'clock. Periodic bookkeeper comes in, uh, and we basically only have visitors there from nine to five, uh, uh, that's, uh, normal, um, a business week. Uh, this is Monday to Friday.
Now, we have a memo from, from the building department dated February nineteenth. Applications for a Tesla showhouse be allowed to have a special use permit for home office. Section three hundred, there's seventy-one B three limits, no employees, no more than three. It is represented that three employees will staff the office, the owner, who's a resident of the home, a business assistant. A periodic bookkeeper under section three hundred point seventy-six A. This use applies to existing residential structure, this dwelling is not built yet and is still before the planning board, so what stage you in with the planning board?
Uh, the planning board, uh, has kept a public hearing only for the fact of, uh, of, uh, tree, uh, mitigation plan. Uh, the project was approved, uh, uh, there is a subdivision was approved with a smaller house. Uh, and we were asked to augment, uh, that, uh, site plan, and I can defer to that if you don't mind. We were asked to augment the site plan, uh, at our last meeting, uh, and, uh, we were asked to put in buffers. Uh, that is to put, to more, to put more visual, uh, buffers in place for the proposed house site. We, uh, a- a- as Robin can attest to, uh, we've sma- we submitted a, um, a plan, uh, with a necessary buffering, and I can walk through that. Uh, before you is the house site, uh, a driveway coming in from the north, it swings along the property. The house is shown here, essentially located in the four, uh, point three acre parcel. A part of the subdivision, there's another lot above us, uh, and basically, uh, they have a septic system and then they have a house beyond it. So if you do the math, we're over a hundred and, uh, fifty feet away from the house, it's off the map here. What we were asked to do is we put a buffer in, and we use something called skip laurels, which are, um, a very dense, uh, uh, evergreen, uh, buffering system. And we've, we're putting a buffer in, it goes here, up here and all along here. Uh, and that buffer was over a hundred, uh, plants being planted, uh, for a, a screen which will reach a height of ten to fifteen feet. And a width of four feet. In addition, uh, we have ar- arborvitae's, uh, which is, there's, we had to add more of them, there's eight on the, on the final plan that we submitted to Robin. And that's basically the, the buffer of this house, so they can't see our house at all, they'll be big, uh, these are called, um, arborvitae green giants. I think they're actually sixty feet high, twenty feet wide, and will c- create a big buffer here in this location. And then where our septic is proposed, uh, it's appro- it's approved by Westchester County, uh, we're putting a buffer of arborvitae's. Again, uh, which grow, uh, about forty feet tall, but they're only three or four feet wide, and we're putting buffering all along here. Uh, any area which is not disturbed, uh, will remain a tree cover, uh, but there is a lot of trees being removed. On the, uh, south and west side, uh, to meet a, uh, very, uh, intensive. Uh, DEP approved, um, stormwater management system which is infiltration basins. Uh, which take all the runoff on this pro- proposed house, uh, and discharge, uh, in this location.
Do we have a memo from the planning board?
Yes, do.
Yeah, I don't have one, you have it, Bill?
Yes, I do. Come here, read it.
Please.
I'm sorry, Peter, can you just stop sharing so I can also put this up on the, uh, screen for everyone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, you're up.
All right, so the planning board is now for the planning board dated February twenty-fifth, the planning board is currently reviewing an amended site plan for the subdivision lot. As a result of the applicant proposing a larger home that was previously approved as part of the Stammer subdivision in two thousand and nineteen. The current request to the planning board includes review of the amended site approval plan, stormwater permit and tree permit, as well as special permit. For large scale solar power, power generation system, for the Tesla solar roof with battery storage for the panels to be permitted by the building department. At the same time, the applicant expressed that professional office use is a critical part of the project, and therefore the planning department recommended. The applicant applied to the zoning board prior to the home being built. Requested special permit for professional office use is similar to any other request in that the intensity of the office use raises. Concerns regarding disturbance to residential characteristics and nature of the neighborhood in which they are located. Planning board has the same concerns regarding this professional office use, request in particular in this neighborhood where this roads are substandard width. And general condition, town code three hundred, there's seventy-six B eight, does include limitation of sixteen vehicular business trips per day. The applicant indicates the planning board, they estimate the trips generally be less than this and closer to ten trips per day. Therefore, the planning board recommends the zoning board consider limiting the vehicular trips per day to less than sixteen trips. In addition, the applicant is proposing buffer plantings to screen the home. Professional office use from the neighboring residential properties, and the planning board include this landscape plan and their amended approvals. Whether a special permit for professional office use in residence can be granted prior to construction, the residence should be evaluated. By the town attorney who, if the planning board does not see the applicant's point of view, does see the applicant's point of view. That they do not intend to construct the home wall without professional offices being allowed. If allowed, the planning board has no objection to this permit being issued with the condition that the office is constructed substantially to the submitted plans. This is admitted by Robin Steinberg, so. Question based from that is to our attorney, who's online with this Adam about whether or not you can grant the permit. Office, home office structure that's not built yet.
I'd like to consider this a little bit. First time I'm seeing the memo.
Is that enough time? Sorry. Time's up.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm kind of concerned with this, it, it's, it's like we're, uh, adding, it's somewhere adding a home office to a residence. It's like we're adding a residence to a home office, and I think the commercial activity there is, you know, uh. Uh, the main purpose of the structure as opposed to the residence, it's kind of like we're camouflaging an office with a residence.
Well, that's my concern when I said model home versus what a home office is.
Yeah.
Well, uh, if I could. So basically, uh, you allow offices like, uh, professional offices, dentists, there's a dentist actually was approved in town, uh, and that's definitely a, um. Uh, a occupation which utilizes customers, uh, and appointments, uh, and again, uh, a, a professional office such an architect or an engineer could be in these zones. Uh, and they would have a client coming for a particular, uh, review of the project. Uh, the technology that is being offered could be viewed strictly from the area of the office if need be. Uh, but normally, when you have something, uh, which has, uh, these, uh, roof shingles and such. You know, people wanna go somewhere where they could actually see it, uh, in use, I mean, it's hard to, um, to envision, uh, what these, uh, shingles look. I could hand them, uh, shingles in their hands, they could hold them and fold them and all that, uh, but.
Well, one, but excuse me, but one, one of the ways this, to me, is different than a home office use such as a dentist or an accountant or something like that is. People don't, don't say to other people, let's go look at my dentist's office, or let's go look at my accountant's office, it's such a nice building. Uh, you're gonna draw people who just wanna see the structure, and that you can't control who's entering the property, and the roads in that area are not built to accommodate that kind of traffic.
It's more like showroom than an office, that's, that's the concern.
Yeah, no one can come there without an appointment, there's no.
But they can drive past it without an appointment to go look at what it looks, what the building looks like.
Yeah, n- yeah, we, we, uh, we pick the locations, we're, we're gonna have restricted entrance to it, if we have to put a gate. As a condition of this approval, we would do so to prevent gawkers, I guess, if that's, uh.
That's, that's a concern.
Waiting.
I mean, the way, the way you're proposing this right now, you can't see it from the road.
We made it, we did that on purpose, yes.
Right.
So we, we, we want it restricted, uh, because, uh, we've worked on other facilities of a similar nature. Uh, and we wanna restrict it, uh, and we, and you can't see it from the road, uh, it's isolated, uh, we could, we could put a gate if we have to, as a condition. Uh, but in that manner, uh, only people would come there when they're invited to come, uh, and it would be coordinated, especially because of the COVID nature of the. Of our society right now, uh, people would only come and look at the, uh, facility. Uh, and, and that, in, in that, uh, in that office space, uh, you know, we would, uh, talk about, you know, the, uh, efficiencies of the components. Uh, we'd have samples of, of some of the components that we're utilizing, uh, but all that's readily available on the internet as well. Uh, it's just that this is a, uh, a concise application of a global sort of, uh, home site. Uh, which is a direction that Tesla wants to take these product lines, uh, they initially tried to sell. Uh, uh, power walls, and then they tried to sell shingles. uh, uh, power walls and then they tried to sell shingles. And then they tried to sell these HVAC systems and these uh, uh, power generating window systems. But it didn't work because uh, it's like looking at a car and looking at the wheel. You know, you go to one place, look at a wheel. You go to another place, look at what the uh, what the interior looks like. You, you kind of have to, 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 to show a, a component system uh that we're creating a uh it's, it's a basically a um, it'll be a hundred percent a generate, a power generation facility uh with all the bells and whistles, a hundred percent interactive. People have to see what they look like. A- and we did look at trying to put together a miniature house with miniatures, you know, it's like a a shed in the back of a office building with some shingles on the roof. But it, you know, it was like, it looked like a dollhouse when we were all done. And people just did, you know, they didn't get it. And that was the problem. Is that they have to see a more of a global component. Cause the investments that people are, are, uh, would be putting into it are over a hundred thousand. These are all, these, these systems are over a hundred thousand dollars. And accordingly, uh, you know, they have to, they have to kick the tires a little bit and, and it, it was the only way to do it. Uh, unless you want to build a house in a commercial zone, which is kind of defeats the purpose. Our clientele are on the higher end, you know, we, we look at uh, uh, house projects which are, you know, fifteen thousand corporate houses, uh, big, uh, uh, we're doing a lot of barn type projects for people which are um, uh, uh, power generated uh by the Tesla systems. Uh, and, and this is, this is an off the grids kind of composite. Now, to make the thing work, you need at least a footprint of like three or four thousand square feet. Uh, because we need that many square footage of uh Tesla roof components. So we can start reaching eighty, ninety percent of our uh required yield uh through solar uh power. So again, we picked a big site. Uh, we got additional land. Uh, it's from, so it can be controlled. Uh, and it'll be fully uh landscaped on all sides. You won't be able to see it because of these buffers we're putting in. Uh, uh, you know, our breviades uh, and our skip laurel hedges are, are very dense. Uh, and so, uh, and we made the sto- we may also made the house only one story. Everything's built into the ground to eliminate that visual footprint. Uh, but again, when they, when they come there, they're able to, they'll be able to see the concept. Again, appointment only. Uh, you have to qualify. Uh, you know, we look at the plans beforehand uh to see if it's even viable. Uh, and so they're, they're only, they're coming here once they've passed uh numerous steps uh for, for the facility. And why we're applying it for now is because we're, we're, we're investing a couple million dollars into this project. Uh, and after to build this house site uh for a uh, for the specific, for, for my client uh to utilize as a, as a living space, but also have the components uh that he's involved with uh, uh, integrated into the project. Uh, it's quite a commitment. Uh, and if we couldn't put a home office there, uh, basically, uh, we'd be, have to put a for sale sign on it and go to another location. So that's, that's kind of why we picked the site. Big, protected.
Let me see if anybody in the audience has a comment on the application.
I mean, I had no objection to the permit being granted really because the construction, you know, hasn't
Okay.
Not constructed. So just to answer the question, circle back on that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, good evening. Yeah, good evening. I have a comment. Uh
You state your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Jet Kanji. Uh, so I listen very carefully and uh it seems that this is an ideal location for a commercial zone. Uh, putting, uh, there's so many attributes to this that sound on face value that they are a commercial. It's a, it's a, it's a showroom. It's a commercial showroom for Tesla. So having that in a residential area is kind of like strange. Now, I know the investment is large and I know it's exclusivity, but I would ask the board to ask themselves that question. Why isn't it in a commercial zone?
Well, he's building as a residential structure to live there.
Well, it's a home office for residents, but based on the description, it's certainly a commercial use.
That's the comment they made previously is whether or not a showroom qualifies as a home office.
Let me ask this question. Once, once you build this, if this were to go through, is this guy gonna live there forever or is this property gonna be sold? Is it gonna be, is this, is this basically a test center or is it gonna be an actual residence?
He's gonna live there forever. He's, he's committed to it. Yes, he's from the area, he's from White Plains, New York. And basically, uh, he lives in White Plains right now. Uh, and basically, uh, uh, we worked quite a while to find this site. You know, we want, we wanted a recently subdivided parcel property, which this is. We wanted multiple lots so that we could you know, have uh room to work in. Uh, and to be candid with you, uh, this close to White, the White Plains area is hard to find large parcels of property, you know, ready to go shovel, shovel ready per se for this particular use. Again, uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's really the technology. Most people will look at the roof, uh, and they will, uh, they'll, they'll be able to look at uh, uh, various uh, components, which would be a special heating system we have, uh, uh, and um, some window components uh, that we have. And that's pretty much what they're looking at. Uh, but I think, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's meant to be a small uh profile. You know, we're not making something twenty, uh, you know, it's, it's very low. It's one store. Whatever we can to sort of hide it into the uh, into the terrain itself. I can go back to that, to those plans we had, uh, how it's built into the hillsides. So we're not making a monument to ourselves. We're trying to just make it so that we have, uh, you know, uh, the components that we've, uh, that we've stressed on the project itself. And the town is acceptable for us being a major a power supplier uh based on the efficiency of our roof system. So we, we have had verbal uh, discussions with the planning board and I would be approved if I didn't, if I had a a more comprehensive tree planting plan, I probably could have closed the, the planning board public hearing and, and, and met with you with an approval, but we didn't have that plan. Uh, we thought we already had a tree permit, but we had to get another one for this.
Anybody else in the audience have a comment?
Yes. Hi. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Charlie Lucino. I live across from the proposed applicant. In fact, my uh, living room will face the proposed driveway. We certainly aren't opposed to new technology and green energy. But it's really, as the board members have pointed out, it's the increased traffic in a very uh, small road area. I probably don't have to point out to the members of the board, we had a fatality on Birdsall by the bike trail. Uh, just the other day, on one of our roads, I was almost run into by another car. Incidentally, it was a white Tesla, but I'm sure it was a applicant. But uh, nonetheless, you know, I uh, am very concerned about the traffic and, you know, it's great to have an estimate that it might be this many, but presumably Tesla is not gonna put this house under the bushel. They want people to know about it. There isn't one for another three thousand miles. So the other statement that, well, don't worry, we'll put up a gate. So that means all the gawkers just drive around the neighborhood trying to find a place to get in. Uh, I, I, I think that it's, it's just not the right neighborhood for that. I think the house could be beautiful, but it's a showroom. I mean, you, you wouldn't put best plumbing supply, very nice place, up there. It's, it's the same thing for people to come in. And while it would be nice that certain people have, make appointments, I don't know that that can be guaranteed. And so we have great concerns about that. As I think, uh, the chairman pointed out, if you read three hundred seventy six, which I'm, I'm sure you have, it does not meet the qualifications. It's not an architect, art, artist chiropractor. I'm not gonna name them all. You're familiar with them. It, it's a showroom. It, it doesn't meet what a professional office is supposed to be. And quite frankly, I think it would disturb the character of the neighborhood and the residential quality. Um, again, it, I think it's a, an admirable project, but not in a neighborhood that has tiny streets. Because I don't think the traffic patterns that they envision are gonna be the traffic patterns that are the reality of the situation. So, uh, you know, certainly I know myself and some other neighbors who may also speak are opposed not to the house, but opposed to an office that is a commercial enterprise, cause that's really what it is.
Well, that's basically my concern with the application. Uh, is what we just discussed as well is I'm not quite certain that a model home or a showroom qualifies as a home office within the meaning of the code. It's not a place, you know, the applicant is saying that, you know, the owner's gonna be doing business there. It's his office, but it's also being used for another purpose, not just his office. And that's as a showroom. So you're adding another commercial use into that spot. That's, I don't think is envisioned by that section of the code. Also, what was brought up also by the planning board, by this gentleman just spoke also, is the road that it's on, although the parcel is pretty big and maybe an ideal parcel for this house. The road that it sits on may not be ideal to the kind of traffic that it may generate. Not only by people coming and going to see the house who are making appointments to see it. But also people may have heard that there's a house there, don't necessarily realize that you can't see it from the road, but they're gonna go and look anyway. Um, those are my concerns with, with, with this application. Anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, with regard to the, the house, we're looking at four garages, you know. Why do you need four garages, uh, if it's not gonna be a showcase, showcase, a show, uh, showroom?
Uh, well, most projects I do of this scale, I put, we, we're putting more than two garages. Most of our, uh, it's a sixty four hundred square foot house. Uh, most people have more space than just two. I'm always building three or four uh, garage spaces for a house this big. Uh, and um, one, one of the garage spaces will be uh, miscellaneous vehicles. Uh, and then the rest of them will be, uh, will be cars owned by the uh owner. He'll, he'll own the vehicles. And, and, and yes, he owns a couple Teslas.
I would assume that. If they ask Adam, our attorney, Adam, uh, is there an issue with what I'm, what we're talking about with a showhouse being used as home office use? I mean, is it envisioned by that section of the code?
Oh, my, my visceral reaction to that is there is an issue. Um they, they, you know, they don't, they don't seem to, to line up in my view. I mean, I could certainly spend some time and do some research to see if there's something I'm missing. But I, but I don't see it.
I mean, that's, that's, that, you know, like I said, that's, that's a major concern of mine is home office, yes, you got three employees. We, we do that in a lot of circumstances, people work out of their homes, but this application specifically is to use it as a showroom or showhouse. And that's my concern is that section of the code permit that. But appreciate if you could, you know
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I, my opinion on it a little bit is it's not very different than an architect, right? Because, you know, it's not a showroom, it's a house. The house is, has interesting features to show off. Uh, it's, it's not like you have, uh, you know, equipment there you're trying to sell. It's, it's the house itself. So let's say an architect had a home office and built a really nice house. And, and part of the reason to do that is you have clients over to see how great of a house that this architect could design. And um, you know, I don't see it as dramatically different than that scenario because it's just examples less than, uh, you know, product on a, on a floor, so to speak. And I wouldn't necessarily call it a commercial application because per, a person is living there. It's a, it's a house. You couldn't put it in a commercial zone and live in it. Uh, that would be a violation of the commercial zone. So um, I, I guess I'm less opposed to some of these things than some of the other members, I, I would say.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Billy.
I just wanted to ask a question to the applicant. Basically, we're talking about, for example, the uh, the amount of people that are gonna be coming to see this. Can you kind of run us through typically what happens when an individual comes in and looks at this site? Because I'm looking at your application and basically you're saying that, for example, visitors were going to uh review Tesla products during normal business hours between nine and five. I, I don't know whether you're talking about Monday through Friday only.
It's Monday to Friday only.
And then it says less than five people per month.
Yes. Cause what, what we have is, uh, we, we're prequalifying people. Uh, and this roof uh system that we're utilizing is best served by building a new house for them. This is, it's
Yeah, no, I, I unders- I understand, you know, visually you wanna, want these people to take a look, but I guess what I'm saying is, is that your application is indicating less than five people a month.
Yes.
Are gonna be coming to visit, which means essentially that you may have half a trip or uh, one car entering the property for the purpose of this once every couple of days. Is that true?
That is true. That's correct.
So what is the purpose then for having the fourteen visits a day?
Well, basically, when I was looking at, uh, what, what, actually, it's, uh, it's, it can only be twelve because four of the trips that are being utilized by the business associate, assistant and the periodic bookkeeper, that would be four trips just of those people, people to arrive. And I just took the four trips from the sixteen permitted by the code ended up with twelve trips, which is six cars coming in a day. That's about the most
But we're, but we're talking about less than five people per month.
That's correct.
That's what's
Yeah, I think what he's saying is the code allows sixteen and that was in the, in the memo. He's estimating on the ground, five trips a month. You know, I think somewhere between five a month and sixteen a day is something that we could put a uh limitation on.
No, it's five, it's five visits a day. It's five, John, it's five visits a month for people to see the house. The twelve trips he's talking about is for the employees who work there. So it's not just five people over the course of a month.
Uh, it's, it's actually four trips. Uh, four trips is one person, a, a trip is one person arriving, one person leaving.
Right.
Two employees, that's four trips right there a day.
The, the twelve was to fill in the space left by the code allowance. Uh, so, you know, if I'm the applicant, you know, why not consider applying for the, the full amount, but you know, I think if we're the board, we can say that, uh, that's not gonna be uh, that wouldn't be fitting to character of the neighborhood or something.
Yeah, we're willing to accept the reduced count. I mean, again, um, when I was with the uh, planning board, I mentioned uh, around ten uh trips per day uh would be acceptable. And why I'm hedging on, 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 on a little, little, little more than a minimal count is sometimes two people, same project, show up in different cars. And there might be an architect coming, you know, to, to look at stuff. Yeah, yeah, it's, we're trying to just keep it flexible. Uh, but we, we would accept a lower number. Uh, and again, uh, we would be able to, we can restrict that with a gate. We can uh, create uh some sort of vehicle, uh, some sort of uh, uh, mechanism uh, that would uh, uh, ensure that we're not uh overburdening uh the, the lot.
It's not so much the lot, it's the concern about the road. It's the traffic on the road. The lot itself, once you get off the, once you get off the road, you're great.
That's what I'm saying. The lot, the lot itself is ideal, but it's where it's located that's the problem.
Yeah, there's not many houses on the, on the, on the, on Jerome Road as it is. I mean, if you look at trip generation counts, most residential homes create two trips a day. And at most, there's, I, I'm not sure of the exact number. One of the neighbors could probably tell me that. Probably six houses on Jerome, if that.
But the concern, the concern comes back to if this becomes a draw. This is a really something, a novel thing to see and people really get interested to see it. It generates traffic by the simple fact that they want to come and see it. They may not be able to see it from the road, but they don't know that. If they know it's on Jerome, hey, let's take a ride down Jerome. Let's go see what that's all about. And I'm thinking that's, if I'm gauging correctly, that's somewhat of the concern that
That's my concern.
With chairman has.
You don't find that, you don't find that with a dentist's office or accountant's office.
What if I built the nicest house in this town and a lot of people wanted to drive by it and it wasn't an office?
But we didn't grant the permit to do it, is what we're saying. If we have, if we could control it, we control it.
It's like saying it's too nice, so we can't grant the permit. I don't know.
No, it's not too nice.
I know what you're saying, John. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm, I'm understanding exactly where you're coming from.
Well, uh, quite frankly, at the end of the day, I'm still, uh, a little bit concerned about whether in fact this does meet the definition that's found in the ordinance. I mean, it says professional
I mean, it says professional office use in a residence. So I think that's something that we really have to explore in addition to coming to grips with the uh, the traffic issues.
And I'm not comfortable doing that unless we have some kind of, I I would like to get a legal opinion from our counsel on that.
I have a curious question and 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 in some way, okay, so we built this house. And it's something of a test house. Is it basically Tesla wants to see how something like this performs?
Uh, it's 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 the technology, uh, has been already, uh, fully vested. Uh, and basically, uh, the application uh, of a composite is what we're looking at, you know, when we, when we, when we put it together. Uh, it's already gonna work, because that, all the components have been fully tested.
And is it the first time it's being done here in the in this part of the country in the east?
Uh, what we've done in the past is we put roofs, uh, we've we've put the roofs on houses as a as a replacements. Uh, and we've been, uh, and various battery systems have been installed. Uh, uh, by other, um, contractors. I'm I'm not been involved with the projects.
Does does this, does this project comprise more of that? Like you were talking about windows and shingles. Is this bringing all of the systems together in in the in the in the building?
Yes.
So then essentially, this is, and this has been done before in the east?
Yeah, uh, each component, uh, we don't have a composite of all the technology yet in the east coast. But we have, they have these on the west coast.
Yeah, 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 which is a different, it's a different animal. When we start dealing with the winter and snow and all the conditions going. And so if you're putting all these together, okay, you could have a roof or you could have a window, but you're putting all of these systems together in one building. Is that my understanding?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Adam, you want to say something?
I I think I should respond to say, you know, I'm certainly happy to render a formal opinion, yeah, before the next meeting.
I'd feel more comfortable proceeding with, you know, the conversation and and potential vote, having your legal opinion on it.
If I can make one.
Please.
Gordon?
Yeah.
There's two other residents that still.
I wanna hear the residents also before we move any further, so whoever's up next can speak.
Um, Mara Zidens.
You're on mute.
Hi, my name is Mara Zidens, and I have resided. At the same house in Yorktown Heights on Halex Mill Road, which has become a tremendous. Uh, through traffic route, but that's beside the point. I don't like the fact that this big corporation, Tesla, wants to put in a commercial. Uh, property in a residential zone. I have seen it happen all over Yorktown Heights, where I have lived for fifty years. And if you talk about the office use, just take a look at some of the office use permits. There are office use permits have all of a sudden gotten one, two, or other occupants. Office uses in their homes. You can look at a piece of property on Route two oh two. That between Route one eighteen thirty-five and Halex Mill Road. And tell me if one office use warrants three offices being in there. So that's changed a lot over the time in the community. I used to serve years and years ago on some of the small planning boards. Uh, Dick Gregory, I know very well, and um. I I just think that this is a false claim by the Tesla Corporation. To create a commercial affair in a residential zone. Does he want to build a model house? He can certainly do that in one of our parking lots, which are totally empty. And put trees around it and say, this is the model house that I could build for you. I don't think that we should even en- engage in providing. A home office. It is not a home office. That person will definitely not be a resident there. Year around or participate in the community. A four-car garage? Wow. Four Teslas in the garage? Wow. I I just don't feel that this is a thing that the zoning board should give them. Uh, a compass to of creating a home office situation. It is not a home office. Let's get real and let's deal with the facts. Not with the innuendos that Peter Scott is telling us that they're going to be doing. It doesn't happen. It has not happened in the past. It has not happened with other developments. And uh, I'm sad to see that this is what's going to be happening again in Yorktown. A false claim that's not going to be in fruition. Did you see what happened in Texas with the windmills and the solar panels? What happened? The snow got on the solar panels and all electricity grid went defunct. So there's a heck of a lot of other issues to think about here, your zoning board. Uh, I don't think that they should be granted a home office use, because it is not a home with office use. And if the design was there correct, I think I only saw two bedrooms. Maybe I was wrong. And maybe the whole plan wasn't shown there. And two game rooms? For a home, two game rooms, upper end of the echelon? We're trying to create places where people can live. This is certainly not the plan. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Someone else want to speak?
Yep, John Schroder. You there, John?
There we go. Uh, I am a technological idiot, so I need to. I'm assuming that since you've made the claim that the the board members are doing individual site visits, I hope you all had a chance. Uh, and not all at the same time to come visit Jerome Road. Um, the the point at which the driveway, uh, comes out onto Jerome Road. Is approximately eleven feet wide. That's eleven feet. The condition of it, as I said to the planning board on Monday night, more resembles the new pictures from Mars than it does a street. Uh, the road is in such horrible shape. The sides have collapsed. Um, it never was built to any specific kind of, uh, uh, heavy use. Uh, these are old country roads that were dirt, that were paved over with oil and chip. Um, and don't sustain very much, uh, heavy traffic. In addition to that, there's no place to turn around in Jerome Road. It just stops. It dead ends and stops. So there is one driveway at the end of Jerome Road, and I would hate to see my neighbor become the turnaround. Uh, for people who happen to be driving by because they think it might be a good thing to go look at. Um, we have had issues on this road with respect to, uh, traffic. The neighbors all kind of know what the deal is. And we all, uh, have made our way around without any serious incidents. But we also have as many as three, uh, buses coming, uh, to pick up the few kids that live on this road. During the course of the day, and that's, you know, twice a day. So, um, my my point is that the road condition really does speak to the issue here. It cannot take, uh, any more heavy traffic. It's gonna be a difficult situation enough. I can't even imagine what it's gonna be like when construction equipment comes in here. Um, that some of that equipment, you know, may just completely engulfs the road. So, um, I think if you haven't had the chance to come out to Jerome Road, you really should think about it. Come out separately, space out your trips, so that we don't have any traffic congestion issues here. Um, but you really do need to come look and see what Jerome Road is all about.
Well, I think all of us have been at one time or another on Jerome. We've done a lot of visits in that area.
All right, well, I just want you to see what's going on now, especially since this winter has torn up the road unbelievably.
I mean, if it wasn't for the fact that he was doing, that we're talking about building this test house. If he was gonna build a private home, wouldn't we have the same issues with construction vehicles?
Yeah, I'm not even. I'm not talking so much about the construction issues. We know that that's gonna happen. We knew that that when the Starmer subdivision was approved. Um, but what we're talking about is that, you know, that will end. And then, you know, if this, if this operation continues, it will be a continuation of the traffic. Um, and, you know, it's just, for us, it's not acceptable.
I just went on Google Earth, and I could say that is one narrow road.
You bet it. I, as I said, I, it's eleven feet. It's a leg, two, two cars cannot pass without somebody pulling into somebody else's driveway. That's the only way.
How do the buses do it in the morning?
Good question.
Yeah, well, the bu- well, there's been some, there's been some situations why the buses come up and and they, they pick you up at, uh, at your driveway. Um, but watching these buses turn around has not been pretty either. You know, it's just, you know, sometimes it takes two or three shots for these buses to be able to, and they're the short buses. They're not the big buses.
And they turn around in the driveways of.
Yeah, they turn around in the driveways of, you know, where they're picking up their their, uh, the students.
Okay, um, anybody else or any additional comments, uh, John and Lynn, anything else?
I think, you know, for us, um, we don't see this as an appropriate use of, of a residential zone. And I'll defer to, uh, you know, Charlie Lucino's argument about whether this meets the the town codes or not.
We're gonna have our our attorney look into that as well.
And and, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could just re- is one more small point relative to the code. Is under B two, it says that no more than twenty-five percent of the usable floor area may be for the professional office. My understanding is the house, it's one hundred percent.
Oh, that's, that's why, that's why it's my feeling that it's not the home office use, because it's a showroom. It's a showhouse. It's not just someone using it as an office.
Thank you. Well, uh, if I may, uh, just, uh, br- bring up some items if I could, um. We can very easily restrict the access, uh, in the, uh, house to the twelve hundred square foot office space. It's segmented as it is, and we can easily restrict, uh, connectivity of the house. From the office to the rest of the, uh, facility itself. I can go over the floor plans if you'd like, uh, but we can easily.
So what you, what you do internally is something we really can't control, on a, you know, and and examine on a regular basis. My main concern is whether or not, even before we move forward, whether this fits into the code. So what I'd like to do if no one else, what, if no one else has a comment, because we have still have other applications we have to hear.
Very quick, very quick comment, Mr. Chairman. So I just, without belaboring the point, so I hear two points here that are very significant. One, uh, is the roadway, uh, which Mr. Lucino commented on, and I comment on that. Myself and my wife do use birds' oil. We use the area to get to the, to the bike trail. We've been doing it for thirty years or more. Uh, that's one. The other one is the fact that this has been presented as a showroom. And like you just mentioned, again, that this whole house is a showroom and not being used as an office.
Correct.
Those are two strong points. Yep.
What I'm gonna do is, um.
Ed, do you wanna say something?
Unless there's somebody new who wants to say something.
I I just had a question, which, for clarification, uh, for Peter. Uh, Peter, you said there was one house in California, uh, or were others in California or just one?
Uh, there's several of various components integrated in California.
And and how many visitors per day do those?
Again, they're very limited. Uh, I can get specific data on that, but again, it's by appointment only, you have to qualify, so it's it's very limited. Uh, because of the clientele that would could basically utilize this technology.
And and how many, how many houses are currently on that road?
I I have a map next to me and, um. Uh, at most, I'd say there's six, but maybe there's more. I have Google in front of me. One thing I'd like to interject though is, uh, my client owns both, uh, current, uh, openings onto Jerome. Which extend, uh, to the south, uh, both lots, both the access to lot ten point one, which is lot two of the subdivision. And ten point two, which is at the very end of Jerome, we also own a strip of land extends to Jer- to Jerome. Uh, and as a condition, we'd be willing to improve that, uh, as a paved turnaround. To mitigate that concern about being able to turn your cars around. We own that lot, we own that accessway as well. It's, it's, uh, by the subdivision map in front of me, it's forty-foot wide strip. We own that at the end of Jerome. We'd be willing to make that a turnaround. That, that is, you actually pull into it and utilize as a, as a turning facility. Uh, and we would pave that and make it meet, uh, whatever standards we have on that. But again, it's a low, uh, there's not many houses on the site itself.
Okay.
Peter, your qualification process, what factors do you evaluate?
Yes. Uh, well, basically, what it is, is thi- this system is is, uh, really apropos to new construction. Uh, it's, it's really, uh, difficult to be competitive, uh, on putting on a nu- on an existing home. The roof system, because of all the, uh, components that have to go into the roof itself, the wiring, uh, and and running. Uh, the power lines to batteries and such. So, uh, we look, uh, at, uh, facilities which are under construction. We look at various houses. They have to face the right direction. They have to face south or west. Uh, they have to be in certain square footage.
What I'm talking about is the people who get invited.
Yes.
To the site. Would, uh, how do you evaluate them? What qualifications do they have to have?
We have, we evaluate what their proposed, uh, house is gonna be. We evaluate what the orientation of the house is gonna be and where it's located. And many people don't qualify, because you can't have a house like this when there's trees around your perimeter. Uh, you need, you have to be, you have to be facing the right direction, the right orientation. You have to be on a slope. You can't be in a flat site because of a tree, uh, shadowing. Uh, and so the whole checklist we go through, uh, and very few qualify, to be candid with you. But and and the goal of, uh, of, uh, and and again, this is owned by a private individual, but there is a criteria with Tesla. Uh, we don't, they don't wanna put any, any product together that doesn't function. That was a big question someone asked.
Are the, are the houses that Tesla is proposing, I guess one sixty-four hundred square feet, is that the, is that the, the typical size of these homes?
They need a minimum of footprint of between thirty-five and four thousand square feet.
Okay.
They need that much roof, because we're only getting so much yield from the roof shingles. Kill watt hours. So, uh, again, when you, when, uh, everyone wants to do a a Tesla, a roof system. Uh, but if you're gonna spend eighty thousand dollars just on the roof, uh, you gotta make sure that you're gonna generate the proper requirements for energy. And most people, a lot of people don't qualify.
Right.
So you need a specific lot for that. That's why, that's why the people visiting is so low, uh, because of the fact that, uh. Most houses, uh, don't meet the threshold, uh, that make this, uh, function, especially in New England. Uh, in California, more people are, uh, 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 because there's less foliage, but here we have to meet a criteria.
I, let's, I I just wanna interject the, I don't wanna cut anybody off, but. Kind of going over the same things over and over again, and I still wanna hear from our town attorney when he, when he's able to do so. Uh, on the question of whether or not this qualifies as home office use, and I don't think that's gonna happen at tonight's meeting. I don't wanna put him on the spot to do that without further research. Uh, so I'm opposed to, unless there's somebody who hasn't spoken yet who wants to speak.
Uh, does Mr. Medina wanna speak on this?
I think he has an application on, that's why.
I know, but he raised his hand.
He wants to know when he's gonna be heard. I don't believe him.
That's why I wanna move this along, because we have other applications we still have to do. So I'm gonna do, unless there's anybody new, I'm gonna move then that we adjourn this. For next month, that our couns- our special counsel has a chance to review this matter for us and tell us if it actually fits that section of the code. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay.
If I could say one last thing quickly for the attorney, uh, it's like a builder with a, who builds a a house and he has a house building company. Uh, again, I just thought of that, that's what we're kind of dealing with here. Uh, it's one of his, it's a product that he puts his, uh. Uh, that he, that he constructs, uh, as a home builder and a mom.
If you have any legal opinion on the matter that you wanna submit, you're you're welcome to contact our town attorney or submit it yourself next month as well.
If you have any legal opinion on the matter that you want to submit, you're, you're welcome to contact our town attorney or submit it yourself next month as well.
We'll do that, thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on. We have Brady.
Yes, Gordon, Dave Tetra again.
Okay, application proposed front rear, in rear addition with the front addition having a setback of twenty-two point five feet, minimum thirties required. At fifteen forty Pine Brook. Good evening.
How you doing again?
Good. Go ahead.
So can you see the drawing?
Yes.
The fine print is very fine.
You should be doing well.
We're gonna keep it that way.
I'm gonna read that.
Okay, so we are looking at two-story residential property on Pine Brook Road. And the owner is proposing an addition in the back of the property, of the house. But our, our zoning variance is for a front portico as part of this project. So in this, in this area, it is thirty feet. No, forty feet. Yes, I'm sorry. It's forty feet in this area for the front yard, and we're looking for a twenty-two point six variance where existing to the house is at thirty-three feet.
So the only thing you need the variance for is that piece in the, little piece in the back?
No, no, no. What we need the variance for is for the front portico that we're adding.
Portico in the front, okay.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so I don't know that it's forty feet because of the cluster zoning.
Well, it, I was, I went over this extensively with Joe Vanitucci, and I think with the, with this particular property at this, in this cluster, the difference was instead of having a forty-foot.
It's, it's.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I think I might have the.
Yeah, I think it's thirty, on your picture, it's thirty-three, that sounds more.
Actually, actually, the setback requirement is thirty feet.
Thirty.
Wait, one more. I want to make sure that I have the, I might, I might have an older drawing up.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you have it, it's listed as thirty feet on the application.
Exactly.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry.
Thirty's allowed, but the existing house is thirty-three.
Yep, I'm sorry, I had an older drawing open. Okay, all right, all right, all right. So, yes, so that's the question, that's, that's what it is. It's thirty-three, it's thirty feet to the front, and we're looking, and we're looking at twenty-two point five proposed, okay.
Do you have the plans for the portico?
Yes, we do. Okay, so the, it's your, it's your, it's an existing raised ranch. You, you enter it onto the, the landing and then you go have a flight up to the living level, have a flight down to the, you know, playroom, garage, that sort of thing. So the front portico is we're going to access the driveway with a walkway alongside. We're going to enter the roofed over portion along the side of the portico. And then the remainder, remainder of the addition is just going to be some closets and a little vestibule area.
No second floor loft?
No, 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 not this, we're gonna put the cell phone tower in the back later.
Excellent, I like that.
Right next to the Tesla.
Next to the helipad. I like that.
The front elevation, we're, we're still kind of working out the, the, the details of the, of the portico elevation itself. But whatever we decide to do with the roof and the columns and that sort of thing, when we get into the construction drawings, will not change the footprint of this at all. So this is a good representation of what's there, but we might modify it a little bit. The columns look a little slender, that sort of thing, but it won't change the, the volume or the footprint of it.
We have a memo from the building department dated February nineteenth. They have no objection. Anybody on the board have any comments on the application? Anybody in the audience have a comment on it?
Before the audience, right now, the steps go like not in that direction, I would assume, or?
Hold on, let me pull up the front.
Probably go straight in.
Hold on, let me pull up the photo. Where is this? So this is the existing front elevation.
Okay, go straight in.
So, yeah, we, basically the walkway is going to pretty much stay where it is. And currently the stairs kind of hook. They, they come and then they turn right to the landing and then you go into the house. So our addition will be front here and the walkway are just kind of entering along the side.
Anybody in the audience have a comment?
Fire alarm, you gotta get out.
Number four.
Yeah, I think we did another portico in that general area within the last five years, so it's not like a major change to the standards of the neighborhood.
It's pretty standard.
Okay. Then I would move that we grant the application proposed front rear addition with the front addition having a setback of twenty-two point five feet, minimum thirties required. At fifteen forty Pine Brook Road, usual stipulation that this pertains to requested variance only, not the remainder of the property line, and that the additions we built substantially conforming to the plans submitted.
For three years. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. You're welcome. You have Chiketti?
We're here.
We're here.
Okay, application for a new deck with combined side yard setback of thirty-eight point three feet, minimum forty's required. Thirty-two oh six Princeton Drive. Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name for the record, please.
That's Ee Chiketti.
Guido Chiketti.
So this is a new deck, so what happened to the old deck? Or was it just an additional deck?
This is a, there was no deck at all.
Okay. And what part of the house is this going on?
Left side of the house.
Any draw, did you submit any drawings with it?
Did, we did, drawings, site plan, plot plan. The building department was here on site.
Yeah, I was trying to avoid opening up the plans if you had it on there, but I'll have to unfold them.
Sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't made aware that I should have them on the.
Oh, that's okay. They give them to us for that reason. I just never, I'm just unable to fold them again. Just looks like a standard deck, not being uncovered.
Correct.
The building department dated February nineteenth. They show no objections. Anybody on the board have a comment on the application? The audience have a comment on the application? Really, first, tonight at least.
They want to put a two-story loft on it.
Yeah, we just approved a two-story garage and loft with a greater, a greater overage.
I have a few bikes to store.
Some Teslas.
This is a accessory structure here, so with the lengthless two feet.
Then I would move that we grant the application. Renewed deck with combined side yard setback of thirty-eight point three feet, minimum forty feet required at thirty-two oh six Princeton Drive, with usual stipulations that this pertains to the requested variance only, not the remainder of the property line, and that the applicant build a new deck in substantial conformity to the plans submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go, worth waiting for.
Yes, thank you.
It was entertaining, actually, the evening. Thank you so much to the board. Wonderful evening. Thank you.
Let's go back to Mr. Medina, is he still with us?
Yes.
There he is, there he is.
Do you have him?
Yes, he's standing in the lower corner.
Okay, application allow a deck with a side yard setback of four point five nine feet, minimum fifteen is required at four forty-five. We called you earlier, but you weren't here yet.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I had a little delay.
So that's, that's why you got stuck towards the end. So why don't you give us, give us your name and run us through your application.
Well, my name is Gonzalo Medina. All I'm trying to do is legalize a, a deck that had an open permit. I spoke with the building inspector, I think he got so, as far as to inspect the footings of the deck. But the application was never closed. The, the deck has been there for a, for a quite a while, I would just like to repair it and legalize it.
I don't see, I don't have any memos on this, anybody have anything?
You have two.
Well, if you have them, go right ahead, because I don't know.
Hey, one from the planning board, dated January twenty-first. The planning board is meeting at January eleventh, discussed the subject application. Board saw, saw no planning reissues with the request and therefore has no objection to granting of this variance. Memo from Brad Goodman from the building department. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow an existing accessory deck with a side yard setback of four point five nine feet, where fifteen is required in the CC zone. I have no objections to granting it, the requested relief.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Or comments?
So it's an existing deck, basically, we're legalizing?
Yeah, just the legalization. Okay, I would move then that we grant the application to, should read number one. Allow with existing deck with a side yard setback of four point five nine feet, minimum fifteen is required at four forty-five East Main Street, usual stipulation this pertains to requested variance only, not the remainder of the property line. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Going back now, we have Carvallo. Although it's Mike Grace's on that application.
He said he wanted his applications adjourned.
Okay, so Carvallo is being adjourned. And the Grace application, which is the next one. Anybody in the audience is here on the Grace application at nine fifty-nine Hanover Street for a caretaker's cottage, or the Carvallo application at sixteen eighty-one Summit Street for the two lots, those matters being adjourned to next month. Which leaves us with the closed and reserved, I believe. I don't have it on my agenda, but I believe you have one closed and reserved item, that was Sarlo?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, if you, if you're ready to proceed with that, I'm going to recuse myself and John, you can take over on that one.
Okay, sounds good. So as we left it last month, we basically were in agreement with the kind of verbal discussion and deliberation, and we asked Adam to write a, a decision for us. So basically what I'll do tonight here is, is read that draft and ask the members of the board to vote on it. And that would be the end of it if we, if we affirm the draft here.
I second that.
Yeah. Okay, so I, I have a memo here and if you want, I'll try to share it on Zoom. Everyone have that memo?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, so I'll just read through it here. So it's a memo, legal opinion, our decision, it's not even a memo. It's our decision of the zoning board, February twenty-fifth regarding Sarlo. Application for a special use permit for the parking of a commercial vehicles contractor's yard on three adjacent properties located in the R one, two hundred and country commercial zone. The premises are located at six seventy-five Sawmill River Road, Yorktown Heights. The application was on the agenda on December seventeenth, twenty twenty. We had a public hearing and adjourned. On January, at the January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting, ZBA chairman Gordon Fine recused himself from consideration of the application. ZBA member John Meisterich served as acting chairman. The board reviewed and considered the following information matters and documents, among others. The application, notice to interested parties, certificate of notice and proofs of mailing, memorandum from the planning, from the Yorktown Planning Board, memorandum from the Yorktown Conservation Board, the reports submitted by the building department, and the memorandum from the New York City Department of Environmental Protection. During the January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the applicant's request to adjourn the ZBA's determination of the application, pending potential legislative, legislative action by the town board was denied. The applicant recognized that, under the current legislative scheme, a use variance was required as opposed to a special permit. Further, the applicant effectively admitted that unnecessary hardship could not be established. For example, the applicant admitted that there was an alternative use for the property and that the hardship was self-created. The board closed a public hearing upon motion by Meisterich second, oh, so, yeah. The board closed a public hearing upon motions by myself and seconded by Fahy, and unanimously voted in favor, we closed and reserved the decision. So even if the application could be converted to one for a use variance pursuant to New York State town law, a zoning board of appeals may not grant the use variance unless the applicant demonstrates that applicable, applicable zoning regulations and restrictions have caused unnecessary hardship. In order to prove unnecessary hardship, the applicant must demonstrate to the ZBA that for each and every permitted u- use under the zoning regulations for the particular district where the property is located, the applicant cannot realize a reasonable return provided that lack of return is substantial, as demonstrated by competent financial evidence. And two, that the applicant, that the alleged hardship relating to the property in question is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. And three, that the requested use variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And four, that the alleged hardship has not been self-created. As discussed above, and at the January twenty-eighth meeting, the applicant was not able to meet the stringent requirements necessary for a use variance, nor was it entitled to a special use permit. So I'll make a motion now to accept that, this, this decision and look for a second from someone.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I just want to, just want to clarify.
Sure, go ahead, Bill.
Is it denial without prejudice?
Yes, I didn't read, I should have mentioned that also. This is denial without prejudice.
And it said that in the, the decision.
Yeah, I, I basically went to vote at the end instead of reading the vote, because I wanted to take the vote, but it does say that this denial is without prejudice to the applicant's rights to pursue a change in legislation that might allow for the project to move forward. Okay, so I think we're done with this one.
Okay, then I'm back on now, and I think that includes our agenda for this month. So it moved that we adjourn the meeting to March. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy zoning.
Mayday.
Zoning, everyone.